Good evening. This is the July 12, 2018 meeting of the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'm the council president and I'll be presiding. These proceedings are being audio and video recorded. And we'll begin as we always do with public comment. This is your chance to speak on any subject. We ask that you only keep it to three minutes or less. And also realize that it's your time to give your opinion and we don't engage in a back-and-forth review. So, I'll start with the people I have on the list and then we'll open it up to anyone who has not signed up. The first person is Michael Tatro. Oh, Mr. Tatro, you might be here for the hearing.
Exactly, yes.
Would you prefer to wait for that? All right. So then we'll go to Tom Burton. Mr. Burton, if you could give your name and address for the record, please, and the floor is yours.
I'm Tom Burton. I live over on 81 Con Street, otherwise known as Toasty Towers these days. I'm here because of the issue with the air conditioning in the buildings and the fact that the Director of Housing ordered them removed and had not offered effective air conditioning. Things that she had offered are marginal at best. And through public pressure and public embarrassment, she's rescinded what she had her policy. But she hasn't given up on the idea. She's as much as said so to some other people, that, you know, she's just going to go through the regs and make sure that when she does it again, that, you know, she can get away with it. So, in any case, I'm here to plead for you folks to do something about that. Because this is a, I mean, I'm 66. I'm reasonably healthy for an old guy. But there are folks over there that are 30 years older and more that don't have the stamina or the energy to come down here and let people know that they're living in apartments which are basically thermal masses. That building over there, that cement roof, you know, soaks up energy through the course of the day and does not dissipate efficiently at night. It can get very, very hot over there. My own apartment over at Salvo will reach up to three digits if I didn't do something about it. And it was ill-considered and, you know, ill-timed and very, very, I think, in my opinion, a health hazard and very dangerous. Not only for myself, but there's 190 people over at Salvo. There's how many people?
Sixty apartments.
There's 60 apartments over here. It's a sizable chunk of the community that's been put in danger by a policy which is, you know, bizarre at its outset and delivered without warning at the beginning of the first heat wave. It's something that could turn into a tragedy very, very easily. So I hope you guys will, you know, Mary Ann has evinced an interest in this as well. This is really something, this person is not fit for the job that she has under these conditions. So I hope you guys will do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Is there anyone else who has not signed up who'd like to give public comment at this time? Ms. Moulton, please.
My name's Sharon Moulton and I live Yankee Hill in Leeds. And I just wanted to tell everybody that something historic is going to happen on Saturday, right, on City Hall steps, that at noon time on Saturday, our Representative Jim McGovern is going to sign a historic pledge supporting the abolition of nuclear weapons. And my understanding is that there are going to be a half a dozen or more candidates for state offices that are going to be there to sign to. And if you come a little before noon, the raging grannies are planning on being there at 11:30 to welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment? Please.
My name's Gabe. I'm sorry I didn't sign up, I wasn't here. I just wanted to ditto the sentiment about McDonald House and Salvo House with the air conditioners. As a nurse in the community, when I heard about the issue, I was very taken aback by it because that was a public health emergency to me. And messages going out to the residents of these communities, you know, happened on May 2nd, when things started to get hot. So I wanted to support the scrutiny over Kara Clifford and her overseeing of these properties. I met with some of the tenants on Monday and I just wanted to come and support them as a nurse in the community and as a community member in Northampton and back their feelings and sentiment about Kara Clifford and her incompetence around this issue and other issues that we hope to bring forth in the future. So I just wanted to ditto, Mr. Burton.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment before we start? Yes, sir, please.
Hello. I'm not actually a Northampton resident. I'm from Ashfield, 395.
If you could give your name and address.
Aaron Nelson, 395 Beltingville Road. And I'm here to support the 16-year-old voting age bill. I was the person who introduced it, the town's resolution up in Ashfield and helped in Shelburne. And I would urge the council to pass it, as I'm sure you've heard many good reasons to do before. And I would also just like to emphasize that it will require planning beyond just the initial passage of the bill if it gets that far. And I would urge the council to make sure that the groundwork is laid with the school committee and with the principals, to make sure that teenagers will be encouraged to use that right to vote because it's not just that it's a trickle-up. If people vote the first time, they'll keep voting. If people don't vote the first time, they won't vote that next time and the next time after that. So making sure as many people get into the system when possible and having policies in place to support that is really important. So, yeah, I would urge the council to support it. And I know I've talked with some of you and you guys are doing good work, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment before the council convenes? If not, we will go into session. I'd ask for the rule of the council, please.
Counselor Bigwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LeBard.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Counselor Shara.
Here.
All right, so we're convened. The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. This is from National Grid, Verizon, a poll for Cook Avenue. This is number 26019356 for that location, holding a public hearing. Do I hear a motion to open the hearing on this?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, hearing is open. We have a representative from National Grid. Does anyone would like to describe the request?
Hello, my name is Michael Tatro. I work for National Grid. This evening I'm seeking permission to set a poll on Cook Avenue, across the street from 14 Cook Avenue. There's a poll number 14. That poll's feeding an apartment complex, Laurel Ridge. And the apartment complex is down a hill from the road, so the wires, service wires crossing the road at an angle going downhill, it's, we don't have our proper clearance. So we would like to set another poll on the east side of Cook Ave, in the town right away, to raise that wire up to make it safe for everybody.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Dwight?
I presume, because that's a major bypass for trucks and other, I mean, larger units that are driving by, is that why you need the higher clearance?
Yes, to put it within our, you know, standards.
Okay. Because currently, obviously, things have been going back and forth with it.
Well, it's up on the end, it's east of Hatfield.
Right.
So it's, you know, it doesn't get a huge amount of trucking, but it's a hazard, it should be fixed.
What's the current clearance? Do you have any?
It's supposed to be 16 feet.
16 feet, that's probably around 14 or 15 now.
Or less.
Excuse me, it's supposed to be 18 feet.
What, 18?
18 feet over Laurel, 16 feet over the parking lot. I also work for National Grid.
I figured. Okay, thank you. No, I mean, that, I think that is a good critical thought and a worthy project. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Just determined that, whereas normally these petitions then appear later on the consent agenda, for whatever reason, petition does not appear on the consent agenda, it's not for actual approval. Does our administrative system have any information?
Well, normally the action would be to approve a poll petition from National Grid for Cook Avenue, so, yeah, due to.
I'll move to approve.
I think that since this is actually posted on our agenda, it is, would be in order to have a motion on it. So Counselor Carney.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on granting this petition? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? So, that's been granted, you're all set. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Updates from me? None. Any updates from committee chairs? Any announcements from counselors this evening? None? Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications? None. So we'll proceed to resolutions. We have one. I will read it into the record. This is R 18097, a resolution to lower the voting rate, age for Northampton municipal elections, sponsored by the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission and Counselor William H. Dwight. Whereas the right to vote is elemental to democracy and that right should be protected and guaranteed to all qualified citizens. And whereas 16 and 17-year-olds possess the same critical analytic intelligence as 18-year-olds. And whereas in Massachusetts, 16-year-olds have been deemed able to consent to sexual intercourse, obtain a learner's permit and driver's license, get married with parental consent, work a full-time job, and pay taxes. And whereas Austria, Argentina, Brazil, Scotland, Switzerland lowered their voting rate, age to 16 for municipal and in some cases, national elections, and studies showed that the younger voters were no less informed than their older counterparts. And whereas the largest portion of Northampton's municipal budget is the school budget. And whereas most people voting in Northampton did not go through the modern Northampton public school system, but most 16-year-olds living in Northampton currently are in that school system, giving them an important and unique perspective on school issues. And whereas studies have shown 16-year-olds have been the largest age demographic to closely follow certain votes, such as following the Scottish referendum to leave the United Kingdom. And whereas early voter engagement increases civic participation later in life, which is vital to a democracy. And whereas turnout among all voters in the United States is decreasing and a push to vote is much needed for younger citizens. And whereas younger citizens are demonstrating their desire to influence the government that serves them by demonstrating for sensible laws to prevent gun violence. And whereas expanding suffrage to people who previously were not able to vote is good for democracy by every measure. And whereas Massachusetts legislation has advanced a civic education requirement to promote critical thinking and participation among young people. And whereas 16-year-olds may now pre-register to vote in Massachusetts, which may provide a logistical framework for their local participation. Now therefore be resolved that the sponsors call upon the Northampton City Council to petition the Massachusetts Legislature to allow the city of Northampton to establish a minimum voting age for residents of Northampton of 16 years for all municipal elections. It's a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. So, discussion. Counselor Dwight?
As some of you know, this has been, and as Aaron commented, this has actually been an ongoing conversation throughout the Commonwealth now for several years. And attempted by communities such as Lowell, some other communities, and Aaron's experience in Ashfield was thwarted at a time not all that long ago. This, the resolution was the brainchild of local teenagers who work in the, who participate in the mayor's. And it gained particular energy and urgency after around March 24th, which is when in Northampton we saw perhaps one of the largest, if not the largest demonstration in decades that was held here in Northampton, that was instigated, managed, and presented by people 18 and under in the community. Now, back in the day when the voting age was 21, there was a certain relevance, of course, at the time, that was during the Vietnam War. And there were people being drafted into the war, dying in that war, or fighting and participating in that war, becoming, being harmed by that war, who had absolutely no say, had no agency in the prosecution of that war. They didn't get to vote for the people who sent them off to go fight for their country prudently. And American citizens started to realize, maybe that's wrong. Maybe there's something wrong with that. There's the fact that these are people that we consider adults in virtually every other fashion, but at some time, they were being deprived of their suffrage. And we lowered the voting age to 18. And now we're talking about 16, particularly for municipal elections. And at a time when, what actually prompts this kind of sense, again, of urgency is that we're on the back end of an election that, and we're experiencing the consequences of an election, that had remarkably low participation. There's a certain cynicism that starts to develop later on about the quality and value of vote. And we, here we have a cohort that's literally asking for the opportunity to participate. A cohort that, it's interesting, all the pushback, of course. We've heard these arguments before, but the echoes of the same argument is that they don't pay taxes. It's simply not true. They do, but that's actually not a qualifier to vote. We got rid of that some centuries ago. You don't have to be a taxpayer to vote. They aren't sophisticated enough. Does that sound familiar? For women and African-Americans who wanted suffrage, they were denied the same reason. There were IQ tests or poll tests in order to prevent African-Americans who were qualified to vote from voting. And then the cynic in me wants to say, if intelligence were, or intelligence or sophistication were literally the guideline, I don't think we would have seen the consequences of the most recent election if that were true. So, the other issue is that they are too easily influenced to vote. This is the argument that was pushed against women, that they were going to be, they were just going to vote the way their husbands voted. That turned out to be a fallacy, but point in fact, it doesn't matter. If they did, it didn't matter. That was not a, in order to qualify to vote currently in the United States, you have to be 18, a U.S. citizen, and in some states, not a felon. That's it. You don't have to be handsome, you don't have to be rich, you don't have to pay taxes, you don't have to be smart, you don't have to be anything other than a citizen. And we have a cohort here who have the cognitive abilities to make discretionary decisions, who actually have a desire for agency. And we, I think it's appropriate that we offer them the opportunity to experience what civic engagement actually is and what democracy arguably is, is not necessarily demonstrably so. But I think, after March 24th, I think the energy, not only locally, but nationally and hopefully statewide, once we go and petition, should come to that. And essentially, that's what this is a request, for the council to consider a petition to the legislature to amend the charter to allow for a 16-year-old vote, that hopefully what Aaron experienced in Ashfield will not happen here. Hopefully legislators will be a little more receptive. Now, normally what I would do in the accepting of this, it does not require us to do anything, it's just that we accept the invitation, as it were. And I had a conversation with the mayor, the city solicitor, with the council president to talk about what that would look like, should it come to it, if we were going to draft a petition. And we decided, given the circumstances, first of all, we are required by charter to do charter review for a variety of things. So rather than throw this up in front of the legislature and then throw up some more later on, we thought that we'd combine it as a package. Another compelling reason for not rushing into this is that we have no one to guide this through the legislature or the senate. There's no, we have no representation. Northampton's in the unique situation where we actually have no one carrying our banner on Beacon Hill. And also given the fact that the legislators who are there, aren't there. They're about to move on, so. The hope is, is that I will come back at some point, hopefully with some co-sponsors, to draft a petition at a time that's more conducive and ask you all to consider, in the debate, to consider approving that and sending it on. But with this resolution, simply to accept the request of the Youth Commission to consider this. So I hope that you will accept it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Well, I will say that I appreciate Counselor Dwight's comments and agree with everything he said. I think he spoke eloquently about essentially what we owe a group of potential voters and what our democracy could give to them. I think it's also appropriate to talk about what they could do for us as active participants in that democracy. You just saw recently, there was a challenge to the cutoff date for registering to vote, which in Massachusetts is 20 days before an election. And there was a group of activists essentially who said, "It's a totally arbitrary rule. Why should it be 20 days? We have the capacity and the technology to do it sooner than that. So aren't we disenfranchising people with that arbitrary choice?" And, you know, the court threw it out, basically, they said, "The legislature can do whatever it wants. They can make their own rules." They didn't weigh in on the merits of whether the voting deadline should be 20 days, or 15 days, or 10 days. They said the legislature can make its own rules. And that's true. But it proves that the rules that we set up are, you know, they're not handed down by God, you know, they're for us to make. And so the decisions we make about the kind of system we operate under will influence what kind of democracy we have and the kinds of results that we get out of it. If we extended the deadline for people to register to vote, we'd have more people voting. We'd have a more active and engaged citizenry, and I think we'd have better policy results. And I think the exact same thing about this proposal that's come from Counselor Dwight and from the Youth Commission in Northampton. It is a structural question for us, whether we want to have a democracy that extends to this age. And I think we absolutely do. I think the more people we have involved in our democracy, the better, the stronger our democracy is generally, and the better results that are going to come out of it. So that's another reason why I think this is an excellent idea. I'm proud that this is coming forward. I'm proud that Northampton is going to join other towns across Massachusetts in pushing for it. So I'd like to thank everyone who had a role in crafting it. Are there other members of the council that could speak?
I, too, agree with everything that Counselor Dwight has said. I'm particularly drawn to the argument that if we provide an opportunity for 16 and 17-year-olds to become involved in the electoral process, and I take the point that we can't take it for granted, we have to work to make that happen and establish that as a practice, that that's going to carry forward and enrich and rejuvenate our democracy in many ways, I hope. So I think it's an excellent idea. I'm totally supportive. I'm just curious, there's been references made to Ashfield and Lowell. Are there other communities in the Commonwealth that have advanced this to the legislature at this point?
If I may, yeah, there are a few other communities that have tried in some of the hills along with Ashfield. Initially, I believe, when Lowell first introduced it, and this was almost three years ago, maybe even more, it was summarily rejected by Secretary Galvin before it even got, it said it wasn't feasible or plausible, without much further explanation. They tried again, and I believe they were successful, but then it didn't survive beyond that. I don't know if it survived the vote. I'm not really sure what happened, it just sort of dissipated, which was too bad. I mean, they actually had a really, a really well-organized campaign by youth. Now, here's the other problem, of course. Counselor Murphy alluded to it when, in Legislative Matters. It's a long process. So someone starting at 16 lobbying for the right to vote will turn 18 in the course of that and perhaps their immense for the support. That's not true of Aaron, of course. Aaron is 20 and is still carrying water for this proposal. But I think there's a wave that's cresting that we have an opportunity to ride here that didn't exist two years ago. There was a certain patronizing cynicism that came with it. And it also comes in the context of depressing votes. As an objective, depressing votes is usually any particular party or group that's inclined to try and game the system by actually limiting people's opportunity to vote and restricting their vote. And we feel, regardless of how anyone votes, that expanding the vote is literally supposedly what we're supposed to be representing. So, I think right now there's the energy, there is the opportunity. I also think it helps possibly coming from a city such as Lowell, but Northampton, with the same organizing, but it also to work in conjunction with other communities that have also tried, I think, if we all, if, well, obviously, regardless, we're not going to have a seniority representing the legislative delegation that's from this district that has applied for these. But at the same time, I think if we combine forces, that we have a much better prospect of having this be realized.
Other comments from the council? Counselor Klein?
I just wanted to say, we've talked about this before and talked about it in Legislative Matters. I'm a huge supporter of this and I'm really excited to see it through, to bring it to the state legislature. There's a term for, for young people, people of color, unmarried women are called the rising American electorate. And it's a block that constitutes, I think, 60% of eligible voters, so speaking at 18. But if we are looking, and, you know, of course, I'm talking at the national level, but just kind of to take this theoretically, to look at how at the national level, if we bring 16-year-olds into voting, we're strengthening even more that rising American electorate that is the new face of the United States. And I think that we, it behooves us to really support that rising electorate to come into its own and have a voice in this country in a way that we haven't seen. And, you know, it's just, it's an exciting movement, and it's a movement that I personally couldn't be happier about. And bringing it to even younger age than the 18-year-olds, to adding them to this rising American electorate, I think is just, you know, something that we should all support.
Counselor Ford, three.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, I'd like to thank the Youth Commission once again. I mean, it seems like every year, the Youth Commission comes forward with something like this that is, you know, it's a game changer, you know, whether it's the plastic bags, whether it's the benches, you know, painting the benches downtown. And so I want to thank Counselor Dwight and the Youth Commission for the work around this. It's exciting. I want to say, it's cool. It's really cool that we're able to vote on this. So, thank you.
Counselor LeBard, did you have?
Thank you. I want to thank also the Youth Commission and Counselor Dwight, which you've been on it for quite a while and working with our youths, and significant difference here. And you brought up about what occurred during the Vietnam War. And my husband and I talked about that last night. And at that point, as soon as you got out of high school, they were drafted. They didn't want to, but they were drafted. I look at our youths here in the city of Northampton speaking out, which was the march, one of the biggest that we've had, and our youths being highly involved and working together. And we all were out there, and it shows how vibrant our community is for our youths. I think they are asking us for something that is common sense. I do not see a difference between 16-years-old and 17-years-old and an 18-year-old person. I think that they should have the right to be able to vote at 16. You have stated in this resolution that they do work. Yes, they do. And they do pay taxes. And they do pay taxes because taxes come out when they work. And I know many residents on my, on my ward who are youths who do work and go to school. But I am very proud of our Youth Commission, and I want to thank you, Counselor Dwight, also, because it's time that we show our youths what democracy is like here in the city of Northampton, and we are very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Council chair?
I'll just say briefly that this generation of young people is, is pretty much the only thing that gives me hope at this moment in time. And I think that I fully entrust, I would entrust more than just voting rights to them. I think that they have just shown themselves to be remarkable and thoughtful and, and not self-serving and, and thinking of the greater good, not just of their generation, but of the world. I think this is, this is really fantastic. And watching them on March 24th, not only did I think the 18 and 17 year olds and 16 year olds were amazing, but there was a 13 year old who spoke more eloquently than I will ever hope to speak in my life, and more thoughtfully and with more depth and critical thinking than just about any speech I've ever seen in my life. So I, I think they more than deserve the right to vote. I, I entrust them with saving us, essentially.
Anyone else? If I, if I can just add one more thing, I think one of the strongest arguments for me for this is a two-word question, why not? Democracy is an evolving experiment. In fact, to, to reach for a cliche, this is a much uttered quote from Massachusetts resident Justice Louis Brandeis about our states, our states are laboratories of democracy for our country. So I really like the idea, and I liked, I liked Counselor Dwight's sentiments, to the effect that our, our cities and towns can be laboratories of democracy for our state. So we should be constantly experimenting, and I see no good reason to stand in the way of, of, of this bold experiment. I think we have a lot to gain and not going to lose by extending suffrage to a new generation. So Counselor Dwight?
And I also should give credit where credit is due, and it's worth acknowledging that it was Counselor O'Donnell who planted this seed in the Youth Commission. This is almost four years ago.
I was 16.
But it was, it was talking about expanding voting rights to the Youth Commission and planted to them the notion that, hey, wait a minute, maybe we can ask for the right to vote. It was also in discussion about expanding voter registration at 16, which was, it was about to be implemented. And, and you made a very cogent and compelling case to them about expanding the right to vote strengthens the democracy. It, it, it actually commits the promise of democracy, or at least starts to commit the promise of democracy. And they took that to heart. And some of them have since moved on, there, some are, even graduated from college when there was first, from when this is first talked about. But they, all of them remain committed to the notion, and so I, you got to get your props, and I think you're entitled to, so, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. But, and to give my own props to the, to the Youth Commission, like others have, it's a really, always an extraordinary group of people, and this is the latest example of great work that they have done. So I join with others in thanking the Youth Commission as well. So it sounds like we might be ready to go on this. So I'll ask for a little call of the council, please.
Counselor Bigwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Resolution is unanimously approved, and we'll return for a second reading in August. Thank you very much. That's great. We now come to the consent agenda. It contains the following items, which I'll read. If there are any of the councils wish to remove, please notify me, we'll vote on it separately. First, approval of special meeting minutes for June 6, 2018, and regular meeting minutes for June 7, 2018, and June 21, 2018. And also, extension of five taxi cab licenses for Jeffrey Miller of Cosmic Cab until August 17, 2018. A vote on this would be the equivalent of extending those licenses to that date. Next, adjustment of term length of Brian Campadelli on, term length, okay, of term length of Brian Campadelli on the License Commission to expire in June 2024. Brian Campadelli of 223 Cardinal Way of Florence, which received a positive recommendation from the Committee on City Services in July. Next, appointment of various people who have all also received positive recommendations from the City Services Committee. First, to the Arts Council, the appointment of Esther White of 17 Summer Street, the Council on Aging, the appointment of Michael Ford of 6 Mass. Soya Street, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Carol Bertrand of 65 Hastings Heights in Florence, to the Planning Board, George Coho of 234 State Street, and Krista Grenit of 492 Elm Street. And more appointments, which have also received positive recommendations, and this is again equivalent to appointing these people, to the Agricultural Commission, John Bobala, 25 Old Ferry Road, the Council on Aging, Garian Butler, 46 Autumn Drive, to the Arts Council, Courtney Hummel of 320 Elm Street, as well as Kristen Mara, 41 William Street, Laurie Steiner of 18 Ridgewood Terrace, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Kristen Dardano, as some know her, 281 Elm Street, Northampton. To the Public Shade Tree Commission, Robert Postle of 44 Washington Avenue, to the Transportation and Parking Commission, Gary Hartwell of 419 Riverside Drive. Any removals? Not as a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose any abstentions, so those things are approved. And we will recess now for finance.
Thank you. Would you call the role of finance, please?
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LaBarge.
Present.
Here.
Thank you. We have two sets of meetings to approve tonight, the minutes of June 7 and the minutes of June 21. Do we have a motion on those?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Agreed.
So we have a number of ordinances tonight, many of which are moving money around at the end of the, this is our last shot for the last fiscal year. The first is 18-130, in order to appropriate money for capital projects from FY, the FY 2019 cash capital account. Order that the following capital projects are appropriated from the general fund FY 2019 cash capital account. Central Services, the Academy of Music Dressing Room Repairs, $10,000. Central Services, Fire Rescue Department Parking and Solar, Solar Resiliency at the main headquarters, $60,000. Central Services, Memorial Hall Interior Painting, $50,000. Information Technology Services, a battery backup replacement for $15,000. Planning and Sustainability Tax Title Priority Purchases for $30,000. Fire and Rescue, a hybrid staff vehicle, $40,250. Fire and Rescue EMS Supply Management System for $17,000. Fire and Rescue Entrance Security System at the main headquarters and in Florence for $15,513. Police need an animal control van for $7,237. Parks and Rec playing field improvements for $15,000. DPW traffic calming for $10,000. DPW traffic signal replacement for $35,000. And DPW wood waste disposal for $10,000. For a total on all of these items of $315,000. Do we have a motion in finance?
No motion. Second.
And the mayor's here if we have any questions. Counselor LaBarge?
Could I just, by way of background, so when we do the capital improvement program, we, all the projects, and there's always a certain number that are from appropriation from free cash sources, there's other that's borrowing, and then these are the cash capital projects, which means that they will be included as part of the FY 19 budget, or at least the funding will be included as a single line item. So that $315,000 was cash capital that was approved in the FY 19 budget. Unlike the state, we actually have a budget for FY 19, so now we can come forward after July 1st and actually request to spend the money. So these projects are the projects that were part of the capital improvement program, but I can certainly answer questions that you have about individual projects.
The animal control van, what year is that, mayor?
So the, and this was a project that, that again was outlined in the capital improvement program. Right now, the, we actually bought a used van, it's a, it was a 2009 Toyota Sienna van. It's actually, we purchased it from the retiring animal control officer. It's approaching 100,000 miles. And so we had been planning, using some, some monies that had been set aside for this, actually for the animal control department a long, long time ago, to purchase a new van. We're actually going to keep the other van as kind of a backup, but, but, you know, it's a van that's equipped with crates and all the equipment.
That was from Willie White, correct?
Um, you know, I, I think it was from Nancy.
It was from Nancy, but I think Nancy worked up.
Possibly so, yeah. I know, that was, I think her aunt who ran the, who had a shelter up there, yeah. But, so that was the van, and when, when she, when Nancy retired, and, you know, we actually purchased it from her. So, but now it's sort of getting to the end of its useful life, so we want to have that and keep the Sienna as a backup.
Any other questions on these items? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is 18-131, in order to reprogram funds to the Jackson Street School HVAC repair from other Northampton public school projects. Where is the City Council appropriated $40,000 as part of the FY 18 capital plan to repair the HVA system, system in the Jackson Street School Cafeteria? And where is the City Council appropriated an additional $150,000 as part of the FY 19 capital plan to repair the HVA system in Jackson Street School Cafeteria when the work was determined to be more extensive? And where is the bids for the project have been opened, additional funds are necessary to complete the work and capital projects with surplus funds have been identified? Order that $38,629 of the remaining balance of the Northampton Public Schools Brick Facade at the High School Project and $2,966.38 of the remaining balance of the Northampton Public Schools JFK Pool Lockers Project be reprogrammed to add $190,000 previously appropriated for the Northampton Public Schools Jackson Street School Cafeteria HVAC Project, bringing the total appropriated for the repairs to $231,595.38. Do we have a motion in finance? Second.
Second, sir.
Any questions?
This is a case where we had a project in the capital plan over two years, and when the final bids came in, it's a little bit higher than we had projected two years earlier. So we're going to use funds from finished projects where there's remaining balances and just transfer those into this to be able to get that work started. And I was gonna, I, I think we made note of it on the agenda, but we were going to ask if we could have two readings on these capital related projects, just because we want to get them going during the summer construction season. So that's the only other note on this one.
And when we get to the full meeting?
That's exactly right. I just wanted to let you know in finance that that's where I have.
No other questions for the mayor on this one? Then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next one is 18-132, in order to transfer $105,000, $105,147.24 from the FY unused, FY 18 unused earned sick leave to compensated absences reserve fund. Order that the amount of $105,147.24 be transferred from the FY 18 unused earned leave account to the compensated absences reserve fund for the future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due any employee or full-time officer of the city upon the termination of their employment or the full-time officer's employment. Do we have a motion in finance?
Second.
Just putting in reserve for the same purpose.
This is a fund we established two or three years ago, and the state law changed allowing, allowing cities and towns to set up this fund, so any unused balances just flow to it. It's only for that purpose, and, and it's there in reserve. We obviously have to budget a certain amount every year, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there will be retirements or, you know, people leaving in that particular fiscal year, so.
And this mostly happens when they retire.
Exactly.
They, they leave employment, but for better things.
Exactly, yes, yes.
All right, then, again, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
18-133 has been withdrawn, correct?
That is correct.
So 18-144, upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, the Conservation Commission and the Office of Planning and Sustainability, this is in order to authorize funding for the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use Trail. Order that whereas the Open Space Recreation Multi-Use Plan 2018 to '25 recommends developing the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use Trail through the Burt's Bog Greenway, and whereas the city purchased and permanently protected the Burt's Bog Greenway for open space and said multi-use trail plan under Mass. General, Chapter 40, Section HC. Whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support trails through the land and water conservation fund act. And whereas the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use Trail through Burt's Bog Greenway will cost an estimated $400,000, now therefore it be ordered, the $400,000 is appropriated for such improvements. Further, that to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow $400,000 under Mass. General Ross, Chapter 44, Subsection 7.3, or other applicable statutes. Further, that the mayor is authorized to contract for any federal, state, or other aid available for the project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs under the Land Water Conservation Fund, and to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out other terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Office of Planning and Sustainability. Further, that any grants or donations shall be used to reimburse funds used for the project. Do we have a motion?
Second.
So this is a fairly common order. Usually Mr. Fiden would be here presenting it, but he's out of town. So the city's actually going to apply for a state grant to be able to hopefully fund this bike trail if, if we are successful. And this is one of two types of state grants where we, to show the city's sort of support for the project, we ask you to adopt this order. We don't have any intention of appropriating the money or borrowing the money, but the goal is to be able to show the, sort of the commitment of the city to do it. And then if we get the grant, which we hope we will, then obviously we would, you know, construct the project, and then typically what happens is at the end of that year, you know, we'll come forward and ask you to rescind this authorization. So it's, I think it's a familiar process, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to secure the grant. This is a piece of property that you approve the preservation of, and, and this is one more place we want to expand our, our trail system.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. I talked with Wayne before he left, and this is the one mayor that we had, I think there was like 350 letters sent out to a butters on preserving all this conservation land and also the property of Doug Coles, which was included with an affordable housing. We saved a tremendous amount of land, and we all supported that when that ordinance came in. This is what people were asking, was to have the multiple, you know, trails coming in so that we can start connecting. And this is the right way to go with our property because this is what the residents wanted.
Definitely, definitely. So again, Mr. Fiden is a master at grants, and so hopefully his streak will continue, and we'll be able to get this one and, and get to work on that new section of the trail. So thanks, thanks for your support for that, Counselor.
Counselor Skirra.
So the grant would cover the entire $400,000, hopefully?
That's my understanding as it's written. I don't know that there's been any engineering or any, I know it's sort of a suspiciously round number, as we sometimes encounter in, in these kinds of things. But if there were additional costs, typically, you know, Mr. Fiden, as you know, would do fundraising, or in some cases apply for CPA dollars. But my sense is that this would be a significant, enough money to begin some part of the trail. So, yeah.
Counselor Bigwell. Would, would this project proceed only if the grant comes through?
I think that, well, it certainly would proceed in terms of we wouldn't borrow the money and, and do it that way. I think that if we weren't able to secure the grant, then again, we would most likely try to pursue other avenues. You know, again, either private fundraising, you know, working with a Friends group, which has done that in the past, perhaps a CPA application. But, you know, this is one that, this is a grant that we've been fairly successful securing each year, so hopefully we'll be successful. Yeah, but we, so I think we'd still want to try to pursue the project. Yeah, but we, so I think we'd still want to try to pursue the project, but again...
Not through bonding.
Not through bonding, or at this point, yeah. If it did, it would have to come through the formal capital program, et cetera, so.
Any other questions on this one? And hearing none, all in favors of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And next, this, these are the transfers. It's 18.135, "In order for FY18 end of the budget year transfers, order that the following FY18 budgetary transfers be entered hereby May. Water Enterprise General Fund for Architecture and Engineering is going to receive $55,000. That is going to come from Water Enterprise Interest on Debt for Long-Term Debt. Water Enterprise Treatment Architecture and Engineering is going to receive $65,000. That's going to come from Water Enterprise Principal Debt. That's where the 65 comes from. Solid Waste Enterprise Landfill for Vehicular Supplies is going to get $967. It's going to come from the Solid Waste Landfill Cell Closure. Solid Waste Landfill Cell Closure is going to get $9,992. That's going to come from Solid Waste Enterprise Phase 3A Closure. General Fund Highways Architecture and Engineering is going to get $27,000. That's going to come from General Fund Highway Salaries Permanent. General Fund Highways Street Paving and Marking is going to get $100,000, and that's going to come from General Fund Highways Street Paving and Marking, so. And Information Technology, Technology and Communications is going to get $6,600. That's going to come from Information Technology's Permanent Salaries. So, all along, $264,559 is going to shift around in interdepartment transfers for different purposes. Do we have a motion in finance?
Move chipper. I move positive recommendation.
Second. Thank you. Questions for the mayor?
No, just, you know, though the fiscal year ended on June 30th, we have until July 12th to make final adjustments to the budget, and these are some items that we want to true up so that they don't end in a negative balance. So, this is all money that was appropriated as part of the overall budget. We're just moving some items around, some excesses to some other areas, so.
Counselor Skira.
So, just to clarify, because I heard some laughing about the street paving and marking, going to street paving and marking, it's going from OOM to OM, or OM is going to OOM.
That's correct.
Right.
It's going, which are two separate line items in the budget, other than ordinary maintenance and ordinary maintenance, yeah, so.
Can you expand on why that is?
I think because most likely, funds were drawn out of one for a project, and there was excess in another to cover it. So, that's my best explanation, yeah.
Because my understanding of OOM is essentially extraordinary or unanticipated.
Yeah, it's not really extraordinary, it just tends to be, so for example, in the police department, we have, you know, we have PNS, and then we have regular O&M, which is just kind of general kinds of maintenance things. Then we have OOM, which we actually use for, like, the police car purchases every year. So, my suspect that we had some, we do a similar thing in DPW, where we have the, sort of, like, capital-like projects, but they are so recurring that we actually built them into the budget, so that's the OOM. So, again, I don't, I can, I can't give you the exact what the expenditure was that triggered that, but again, we have $100,000 available. It just happens to be in a different line item, so we're going to move it.
Just me catching up with the acronyms.
That's, it's fine. There's many of them to catch up on.
Any other question for the mayor on these? The hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
The last is 18-136, "In order to authorize intermunicipal agreements for the paramedic intercept services for the town of Hadley. Order that whereas Mass. General Law, Section 40, Sub, Section 4A allows for joint operation of public activities among governmental units, and whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A requires that such intergovernmental agreements be approved in a city by the city council and mayor, and whereas the city of Northampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities, therefore pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 40, Chapter 40, Section 4A, the city council hereby authorizes the city of Northampton to enter into an agreement, the town of Hadley, for paramedic intercept services for FY19 and FY20, and therefore shall automatically renew for a subsequent one-year period unless terminated as part of the agreement, however not to exceed 25 years." Do we have a motion in finance?
Motion.
Second.
So, we have other paramedic intercept agreements with multiple other towns. I think actually, the order that you're going to take a second reading on tonight references that on the second page. This is a new agreement with Hadley. Some of you may know that Hadley and Amherst had a parting of ways on ambulance service. They, Amherst used to provide all the ambulance service for Hadley, and this year, there was a change, and so Hadley is now using a private provider to do their ambulance service. And so, we are, this is an agreement to provide intercept in cases where they do need a backup at a paramedic level, to be able to basically meet a patient and transport a patient. Again, we have these agreements with many other communities around us. We didn't have one with Hadley because of the arrangement that they had with Amherst, so that's why this is new for 2019.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? And hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
I know of no other new business. So, a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go through some financial orders now. First is 18.130, "In order to appropriate money for capital projects from fiscal year 2019 cash capital account." Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Suspend Rule 14.
There is no Rule 14, but the suspension of rules.
Yes, yes.
So, made in second. Any discussions, suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, any discussion on second reading? Whenever we're ready, we'll have a roll call.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
And Counselor Carney.
Yes.
That order is approved on second reading. Next is 18.131, "Order to reprogram funds to Jackson Street School HVAC repairs from other MPS projects."
To approve.
Seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
On that, okay. Any discussions, suspension of rules? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Move second reading.
Is there a second on second reading?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on second reading? Then a roll call when we're ready.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Yes.
The order is approved on second reading. The next is 18.132, "In order to transfer $105,147.24 from FY18 unused earned leave to compensated absences reserve."
Let's approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Rules are suspended, is there a motion on second reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
The next order has been withdrawn, so we'll skip to 18.134, "In order to authorize funding for the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use Trail." Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Seconded, made in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
To suspend rules?
Do we want two readings on this?
We didn't need.
It was actually not a request.
Oh, she got excited.
I know.
No, I rescind my motion to suspend rule.
I rescind my second. No eagerness for the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use.
Take and wait.
Or an end of approval.
In that case, we will proceed to another one. We may have an opportunity for suspension of rules. 18.135, "An order for fiscal year 2018 end-of-year budget transfers."
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
To suspend rules?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on suspension of rules? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Rules are suspended.
Second reading, please.
Is there a second on that? That was a second, okay. Any discussion? Look, I'm auctioning something. If there's no discussion on second reading, I'll ask for a roll call of the council.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
As approved on second reading as well. Now, 18.136, "In order to authorize intermunicipal agreement for paramedic intercept services for Hadley."
To approve.
Second.
Made in second, any discussion on this order? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension of rules? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Rules suspended?
Second reading, please.
Is there a second on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
And Counselor Carney.
Yes.
The order is approved on second reading. Now, we have several orders which are on second reading. First is 18.124, "In order to grant utility easement under Masonic Street Parking Line." Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Made in second, to approve, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
It's approved on second reading. The final order is eighteen point one twenty-seven, "In order to authorize fiscal year 2019 intermunicipal agreements." Is there a motion to approve? Made in seconded, any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
There are two ordinances which have not yet been referred to Committee on Legislative Matters. There are eighteen point one thirty-seven, an ordinance relative to parking on King Street, and eighteen point one thirty-eight, an ordinance relative to parking on Adair Place.
Second.
So we're referring these to legislative matters, but the Transition Parking Commission as well, or just legislative matters?
Well, they come from transportation.
They've already been taken.
They come from. So just legislative?
Just legislative matters, okay. For the purposes of information...
Oh, I'm sorry, move them as a group, it was...
Yep, okay. So a motion to move them as a group is made in second. So relative to the motion of referral, just so we understand it, could someone explain just basically what we're looking at? It's good just for us to know what we're...
Okay, so the first one has to do, the parking on King Street has to do with creating a 15-minute spot in the area of Sutter Meats, that, this has been approved by the TPC to create one 15-minute space, and we're sending it over to Legislative Matters. The other has to do with Adair Place, and, and the, so, this is, at some point, there was a request to, I believe it had to do with the correct signage on the street, and when the city went in and did that, they discovered that everything was incorrect, so they put it, so, in the diagrams that have been shared with you, oh, isn't the TPC fund, in the diagrams that has been shared with you, you are seeing the corrected condition on Adair Place, and it is not what the residents were wanting, or what, what had traditionally been going on there. So therefore, the correction, the, what we're proposing is to go back to what was originally being enforced on Adair Place.
Okay.
So that's, I'll be there.
So it's on Adair Place itself, or Prospect Street?
It's on Adair Place.
Okay.
None of this is on Prospect.
You might want to look at the actual language, seems confusing that it would say, "On Adair Place on the northwesterly side from Prospect Street..."
It's on the corner.
"...to a point 60 feet northeasterly from Adair Place." From where Adair and Prospect intersect, right?
From the edge of Adair.
And it should be from Prospect. Just something for the committee that deals with this kind of fun stuff to look at. Okay, but this is still their question of referral, it's just general for public information, so, good. So all those in favor of the referral? Thank you for the description. There's a motion to refer them as a group?
Yeah.
Oh, yep, I just want an explanation for the benefit of the public, so, the motion on the floor is to refer them as a group to Legislative Matters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so they're referred, thank you. And thank you to the chair for the description. Now we have two ordinances that are actually for voting tonight. First is eighteen point one one one, an ordinance relative to parking on Pleasant Street. This is first reading. It was recommended positively, sponsored by the Transition Parking Commission, referred to Legislative Matters, and got a positive recommendation there. We should pull this one up, maybe the map at least.
I'd like to make a motion to approve for purposes of discussion.
Okay. So the motion's on the floor. The language it would change is, in the schedule of where parking is prohibited, where it currently says, "On Pleasant Street on the easterly side from Hoyoke Street to 177 feet southerly, presumably of Hoyoke Street." It would change that second part to, "From Hoyoke Street to Hockenham Road." It would elsewhere change it, "On Pleasant Street on the southwesterly side, from a point 258 feet southeasterly of Hampton Avenue." Whereas now it says a point 318 feet, it would change it to a point 300, excuse me, 457 feet southeasterly of Hampton Avenue. And it would strike in its entirety, the prohibition, which is currently in effect, on Pleasant Street on the westerly side. How many sides does Pleasant Street have? Is it a cube? A point 51 feet...
The fifth dimension.
Really need to do some work on Pleasant Street. It's basically a Mobius strip, yeah. A point 51 feet northerly from Michaelman Avenue to a point 102 feet southerly, so that would be struck, and in its place, it would be Pleasant Street just westerly from Millbank Place to Hockenham Road. It would also make an amendment on the schedule that contains on-street parking meter zones. It would change the place on Pleasant Street on the westerly side, which is currently from Kingsley Avenue, to a point 150 feet northerly from Michaelman Avenue. It would just extend it all the way to Michaelman Avenue. So those are the text changes, and we have the picture on the screen, which is more descriptive. And I asked the chair of the TPC maybe to describe in English, so people have three different descriptions.
No, I'm really strong. So, so basically, what this is, is we have had all of the Pleasant Street improvements, which has changed parking, and, and sidewalks, and crosswalks, and this is the result, is that we've lost some parking spaces, some spaces have been moved to the other side of the street, and so, we've already approved this plan, the plan has been implemented. I rode my bike here up Pleasant Street, I can tell you that all of these features are there, and so this is to have, you know, city ordinance line up with what we have on the ground.
Okay. Good, any other discussion then? Counselor Bidwell? So, is, what is the net gain or loss along Pleasant Street of parking spaces, when all is said and done? Do we, do we know that? I know some have gone, some have come back.
It's a net gain, I can't tell you the numbers, it's definitely a net gain.
Okay.
We added parking.
I will get you the number for second reading.
Thank you. Which is already in effect.
True.
Useful information.
It will also go into the fifth dimension, and in that time span, where time doesn't really...
That's right, since Prospect, Pleasant Street has six different sides, cars can park in the same space. Counselor Nash?
Well, I, I want to add, so I will get back to you with the exact number. One of the areas where we did add parking spaces was at the end of, at the entrance to Hockenham, we added eight spaces there, so, while some on that easterly side of Pleasant near the bike shop is, those spaces went away, some of them went over that way, to Hockenham.
I think due to the work of the council from Ward Three, they've been painted, which has cleared up some of the confusion about parking in that area.
The city was very, our administrators were very responsive, and those spaces appeared, the markings appeared very quickly.
Yeah.
As part of this project.
That's great. Any other questions? I, I think what's happening on Pleasant Street is absolutely wonderful, so, happy to support the ordinance that conforms to reality. Any other discussion? Then we can have a roll call on this, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the ordinance approved. Any new business this evening? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. That's all, folks.